The Lake Forest Podcast is supported by viewers, listeners, and businesses just like you. Michelle Parnell has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Grow. Owned by Lake Bluffs own Rich Rusich, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard to find small badge products that will delight both the occasional user and gendier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info@iliadgrow.com. Larissy and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest's own Brian Larissy specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. Earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award, their process is straightforward. Just upload, review, and file. For a free quote, visit LarissyCPA.com now. That's L-A-R-I-S-E-Y-C-P-A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services, plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. In a relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under their supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers, and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at 224-768-8028, or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for. What up, brother?
Good morning.
I'm going to read something here. Just go along. Welcome to the Lake. Welcome to the Lake Forest Podcast, your virtual public house where I, Pete Jansons, am your virtual bartender, ready to serve up the latest buzz around town. Pull up a stool and join the conversation at our bar where everyone is welcome to share their thoughts and stories. Here at our podcast, we chat about the happenings and hearsay of Lake Forest, just like old friends catching up over a drink. Our discussions are intended to entertain and inform, providing a place for community voices to be heard and diverse opinions to be shared. Please remember, while we aim for engaging in thought provoking content, not everything you hear may be the final word. We're here to discuss and debate, just like any lively bar chat. We value all perspectives, even those that challenge our own as part of the rich dialogue that keeps our community vibrant. So grab your favorite beverage, join the dialogue, and let's enjoy a good conversation together. Don't forget, we're here for community spirit and shared insights, not courtroom disputes. Cheers to good talks and great company. Your thoughts, Joe?
Like it.
I'm doing like a Pat McAfee. I'm doing like, um.
Don't show your biceps like Pat McAfee. That's a little too much Pete. A little too much Pat McAfee, if you ask me.
No, I think.
You can get Aaron Rodgers on like McAfee used to do. That'd be an awesome guest.
Yeah, so everybody's, everybody wants.
I say we go, let's go.
I'm going dude, but I.
All right, okay. I was worried maybe you had band practice.
Uh, no, that's, that would be next week, but. And then them as a nonprofit, you saw the paperwork I sent you.
Yeah, but that's still not a 501(c)(3).
Right, right.
He said 501(c)(3) on their podcast.
And that's a delineation between, so they can do political stuff. He said he was, but they're not, so they can do political stuff, right?
Yeah.
So he lied.
I'm not an attorney, but there's clearly holes in the process. And the bigger picture here is don't call yourself transparency. Don't use the word transparency in your name and not be transparent about what you're doing.
That's all fine and good, but I'm talking about, there's nothing to report.
Right. Still don't know who their donors are. Who's funding it?
All right, here's Lori. Look at that pretty picture. I'd buy a computer with that face.
Hold on, I'm trying to get my video on. There we go.
What up, girl?
How are you?
You know, making friends.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Right and the left. Do you know Joe Weiss? If not, Joe Weiss, Lori Fitzgerald.
Hi Lori.
Hi Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I feel like I know you because I, I, I watch the podcast, so I do feel like I know you.
I'm your virtual friend.
That's right, that's right. It's nice to, nice to virtually meet you officially.
Thank you, thanks for coming on today.
Yeah.
That's the premise of the show. We're a virtual public house, just like the old days. People get together at the bar, talk about what they heard and share opinions. And here we are. One of the opinions, how we know each other Lori was, uh, you were a part of the evil doers of the contested school board election a few years ago. Remember that? Let's do better.
I'm officially off the, uh, the terror watch list. Like, I don't like being on that, let me tell you.
I'm sure you got a lot of, almost as many nice emails as I get, but, uh, the, that, that particular contested election caused a lot of, not only in your world, angst my world, because I went in, I donated money. Because the caucus president at the time, Mike Adams, said, you know, uh, here are the people that haven't donated any money to the caucus lately. They're a part of the caucus and I put some money in and we bought the lawn signs and we did the thing and finger pointing. And when it was all said and done, you didn't even know what the caucus was. You were running for school board.
Yeah.
What was your, what was, look, I'm getting, I'm older than you, okay? And I played ball, so I got my head rung a little bit. What is your recollection of how that, all that went down Lori?
Um, you know, it was a real, it was, it was a very crazy time. Um, and it was very divided with, you know, folks that, and, and I won't even say like whether you were on the right or the left.
Right, right, right.
Like folks that wanted the kids to be in school, in person, and folks that thought, you know, no, this is a danger. We need to keep kids at home. Um, and so I, I ran, I'm a, I'm a single working mom with three kids and, um, and so I've got my own belief and opinion. And so I ran strictly because I felt like, you know, I wasn't agreeing with, with the stance that, you know, school district was taking, and I wanted to try to do something to improve, improve that for the sake of the kids, right? For their education. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm not a political person. I'm really not like, so, um, and honestly, the school board, the school board's a volunteer position. It's not even, it's not even public office, it's volunteer. And it turned into, it turned, like, you know, regardless of what you're, you know, we didn't even get into what your political beliefs were. It was just if you, if, you know, if you were challenging the status quo, you know, you must be, you know, dark, evil, you know, no good person. So, um, so it turned into a witch hunt more than a, hey, let's really understand where this person's coming from, where they stand on the issues and what's best for the community. So, um, and frankly, I wish I knew about the caucus because I've, I've since talked to some people at the caucus and I, I actually, you know, I, I agree with the, um, I agree with the, you know, the, the premise behind it and what they do. And, and actually I listened to your podcast about that recent vote that we just had. And I think Joe, you were the one who said, like, you know, half the people aren't even around to go, you know, vote at the Gorton Center. Um, and that, I was actually traveling for work. I would have gone and voted for the caucus slate of candidates, but I was out of town. My family that lives in Lake Forest, they're snowbirds down in Florida. There's no mail in, in ballot, so they weren't here to vote. So I, I completely agree. I mean, that, we got to figure out a, a, maybe a better way where people can show support for the caucus, right?
So tweaks and part, part of it with you Lori was what got to me was you didn't even know about the caucus. So you're, you're contesting something, you, you just thought you were running for school board.
Yeah, I was just volunteering.
Yeah, you're volunteering, right? So, and I forgot all the characters at the time, but we did that. And when it all settled out, I reached out to you because if you're so bad, let me talk to this woman. And you came on, we'll put the link to the show right here. And I'm like, I didn't see any like, cool chick. We've been buds ever since.
Yeah.
So, so now, and you, and you came on the show, which I respect. There's certain people that don't want to come on the show and that makes me wonder about things. But I won't go there Lori, because the reason why we brought you on is just catch up people who you are. You've been in, you lived in Lake Forest, what, 20 years at least?
Yeah, I grew up here.
Grew up here, okay, you grew up here. So you've been around town and part of the thing, I'll, I'll let the caucus marketing thing go, but to live in town for 20 years and not know about the caucus thing, there's something like, we gotta.
Well, I know, to be fair, to be fair though, when you grow up here, you're, you're really like teenagers. They're, you know, you're not really, um, and, and honestly, back then, that it wasn't as divided as it is now.
Well, there wasn't social media back then. Now it's, uh, you can go into an echo chamber and you can blame all you want to all your buddies.
Yeah.
And that's what we tried, we try not to be that here, but it's hard to get people that have it. When I say the, to, to me, the left isn't so much as the political party as it is people that have differing opinions. Which I respect, that's what America is all about. But if you have a differing opinion, you won't back it up, then, you know, then I question it. So we'll, we'll let that go Lori, because the whole reason why we got you on is, and I just saw the, uh, you completed a, a merit, do you know how to run or something? Did you just complete a marathon?
She ran for school board, of course she knows how to run.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah, yeah. So I, um, I know, so we bumped into each other, Pete and I bumped into each other. I think we were both going to get our nails done at the, uh, the Phoenix Nail Salon.
I thought the aesthetic lounge.
That's right, that's right. Pete and I were getting pedicures next to each other.
I know you didn't bump into Pete running, that's for sure.
Hey, Lori will take you out.
I see him out there.
As a fiddle.
I, yeah, no, but I've seen.
I ain't messing with Lori.
I've seen Pete out there when I'm on the bike path.
Anywho.
Out there. Um, yeah, so I just finished.
Going like this?
No, he's walking, he's walking.
Brisk, brisk walk.
Hey, he played off, he, he played offensive line back in the day. Now he's just offensive.
Uh, I hated running that mile. Lori, were you just in Boston?
I was, I was. It was happy Patriots Day, by the way. Did you know that's an official holiday?
Yeah.
Didn't know it.
Now my patriotic Lake Forest Cup here.
I love it, I love it.
With the Lake Forest scout logo that's going nowhere, according to John Noble.
Good, yeah, the third.
So you're there for the, for the chowder, the beans? Why were you in Boston Lori?
I was there to celebrate Patriots Day.
Okay.
So it is an official holiday in six states. It's the third Monday of April every year. And it celebrates the Revolutionary War, the battles of Lexington and Concord. Florida celebrates it, Florida celebrates Patriots Day.
Florida's a very patriotic state these days.
Yeah.
Very crowded, very crowded state. Lori, is there any other reason why you would be in Boston?
The marathon Pete.
Okay.
There's no other reason, there's no other.
When, when was the marathon?
Check out a Red Sox game at Fenway.
That is true, yes, that's true, yeah. Um, the marathon was on Monday, so I just ran Boston on Monday. It was a great day, it was beautiful, sun was shining. I did, um, I did a tour, the Revolutionary War tour, walking tour. I saw where Sam Adams was buried, um, learned about the Puritans. I, you know what I learned?
What?
That this country was built on, um, democracy and the, and the idea that all men are created equal.
Even if they're women?
Yes, regardless of your race, regardless of your religion, regardless of your gender. It's a beautiful thing.
I'm trying to stay away from politics here Lori.
I know you are.
Well, not really. The Boston Marathon, uh, that's pretty easy to get into. Uh, I could just, uh, apply to get that and get my little placard. I probably need a lot more zeros, uh, to cover me, but what?
You know what?
Process.
So, okay, so, so Boston is the only, so I've, I've done all six. Actually I brought, look, I, I even brought my medal here. So these are the six, these are the six.
Is that Abbott? Is that the Abbott logo on there?
Yeah.
Big employer here in Lake Forest?
Yes, that's true, yes, they are, yeah. So Abbott actually started the, the, the world marathon majors because, um, we needed, we needed races for the, for the elite marathoners to compete against each other, because the only race that they have is the Olympics every four years. You know, it's not like USA Track and Field where they, you know, they have different world championship events and stuff. So Abbott, Abbott said, you know what? Let's create this series of six, um, six world majors where the elite athletes from around the world can come and compete against each other every year. Um, so that's what started it and, and, um, that there's certain, there's certain requirements that the cities have to meet in order to become one of the world majors. Um, and they're, they're very strict, like you have to have so many volunteers, you have to have so many solo cups of water, like the ta, the, the, the water stations have to be.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, to be able to support, you know, um, but then it gives, you know, it gives the amateur athlete like myself and others the opportunity to go and, and run those same races that the, that the elites get to do. So, and you're guaranteed when you, when you run a world major, you're guaranteed a top notch professional experience. So.
That, put, pull up.
Is the Chicago marathon part of that?
Yeah, yeah, Chicago's one. So it's Chicago, Boston, and New York, and then London, Berlin, and Tokyo. And Sydney, Australia is, is making a, a bid to become the seventh. And, um, and so we'll find out in 2025 whether Sydney, Australia will become the seventh.
Can you put up that medal again? That's pretty badass.
It's the most expensive piece of jewelry I own.
Wow.
Awesome. That is aw, what was the first one you got on there?
Uh, the first one I did, obviously Chicago.
Okay.
And I, so I signed up for Chicago with the, um, with the, the goal of qualifying for Boston. That's all I wanted to do. And, and Boston is actually not the hardest to get into to qualify. The hardest is, um, probably New York, uh, but Boston is the oldest. So Monday was the 128th running. Um, so Boston is the oldest, which is why it has that prestige and it's celebrated on Patriots Day. So it's very, very patriotic, um, but you do have to qualify. So all of the other ones have a lottery system where, in their heart, like Chicago this year had the record number of applicants. I think like 140,000 people applied for Chicago. Um, and I think there's only like 20,000, um, 20,000 spots, so.
When you apply, do you have to like write a check?
You, a credit card.
A credit, okay. So, and if that application fee, if you get denied, do they keep the money?
Um, if you get denied, no, no, they don't charge your credit. They just keep it.
Oh, they keep it up, okay, man, that'd be a good racket.
Yeah, but if you do get in, they charge, yeah, they charge it. And that's typically how you know that you got in is all of a sudden you see this charge on your credit card. Say, oh, I got in.
So you've done quite a bit of these, you got the hardware to, to show, show for it. Um, the different venues that you've gone to, like, let's just say Japan, I forgot what the time difference is there, but you have to get acclimated and, uh, is it flat? Are there hills? Like, uh, how, how'd you prepare for some of these? What, what's noteworthy to you?
Yeah, um, well, they're all a little bit different. Tokyo is, Tokyo's very flat. Um, so from like a hill perspective, like it's, you know, training around here would be comparable to what you're going to experience in Tokyo. Um, Boston and New York are very hilly and, um, amongst like the serious running community here locally, everybody knows that if you go out to Barrington Hills, um, and there's, there's a, like a, uh, cult of people, which I will proudly say I am a part of. But, um, we go out to Barrington Hills and we park at the Barrington High School. And, um, there's a couple of loops back there, um, by the high school that are very, very hilly. And, um, and actually I did, so I did an 18 mile training run in Barrington Hills. And my, the elevation gain was like a little over a thousand, a thousand foot elevation gain. And, um, the Boston course is 850 feet elevation gain. So you go out to Barrington Hills and you can get your, get your hill training in. It's comparable to what you'll, you'll experience in Boston, um, or New York. But yeah, Tokyo's flat, Berlin is flat, um, obviously Chicago is very flat. Uh, London is like slight, like slight rollers. Um, but yeah, so they're all, they're all a little bit different. But the, in the time change, uh, there's definitely, that, that plays a huge factor. So you just have to.
Like how early do you get there? A week?
I went to Tokyo a week ahead of time.
Week, okay.
Yeah.
Now, now besides you, there was Natalie Yang, 26, young youngster, Jeanette Peck, uh, Lori Fitzgerald, Catherine Najar. Of course I'm getting the names right.
Oh, that, those are 2024 Pete, you're looking at the wrong patch article.
Oh crap.
Look at the date.
Oh. Did you beat your time from last year then?
Um, I did, you know what? So this is what I did this year. Um, so okay, last year I ran Boston and London and they're six days apart. So I ran, so I ran Boston on Monday, happy Patriots Day. And then I got on a plane and I flew to London. And, um, so I ran Boston Monday, flew to London, you know, did the Tower of London, Windsor Castle, you know, all the tours, and then I ran, and then I ran the London Marathon on Sunday. Um, so Boston last year was just kind of a, like, easy, you know, let's not get injured because I really want to be able to finish London. Um.
Okay, duly noted. So, so basically I gave a shout out for last year's people. I don't know why it came, came up. I guess, uh, I need my fact checkers to look at things, but did, did you, did you know anybody that from Lake Forest that was out there? Yeah, let's give us, give me the, we'll edit the other stuff out in post, but who should we give a shout out to that you know that ran with you?
Yeah, so, okay, so Jenny Spangler Racing Team, um, is who I run with. And so we had Raj Pana out there, Mike Marty, um, Jennifer Abanero, uh, ran with us. And, uh, Brian Falcone.
Huh, so even number of women and guys? Cause it looked like, uh, the women have been kicking a lot more butt than the men have, okay.
Guys are pretty fast, the guys are pretty fast, but girls are coming on strong.
Now I forgot the guy's name, the Australian guy, um, that has the running club here in town. Do you do anything with those guys? They run every Saturday morning?
Oh, the Lake Forest?
Running club, running team, whatever it's called.
Yes, yeah, the, um, at Lake Forest Train Station.
Train station, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we're, we're kind of affiliated with them. We're part of the same group, but we usually head out a little bit earlier just because we're doing longer distances. So, yeah, if anybody wants to, that's, it's a, honestly, it is a great, if anybody wants to get into running and it literally, it doesn't matter, you don't have to be fast, you don't have to, you know, go long distances. Um, there, it's a big group and they, there's people of all different levels and, um, and honestly, it's just, it's great camaraderie. It's, you know, nice to, to get out on a Saturday morning, especially in the summertime. Um, you know, you're social, you're healthy, you're enjoying.
Yeah.
We're, I mean, this, I will say, like this area, um, I was thinking about this, there's a, there's a book called, um, Outliers. Have you guys heard of this book? The Outliers. Um, and so one of the premises is like, like what, you know, how, it, it's the, the environment.
Hours.
The environment that you live in can contribute to, you know, certain levels of success and just having accessibility. And I will, like our bike path, I literally live right off of the bike path. So, um, I have, I have no excuse for not getting my butt out there and, and using it. So, you know, if I, if I live somewhere where it was difficult to, you know, to, to get out and go for a long run.
What, what are some of the tips you can give out there to the youngsters that want to get into this? Do they need all that goo stuff and, uh, carb load? You see that Office episode where Michael's eating pasta before the.
That's the best part Pete.
What, what?
The only reason I run is so I can eat like that.
I think you.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, pasta, like as, as someone who has to avoid carbs, and I have friends that run marathons like you, and they're like loading up on carbs and I'm just, I'm going into a diabetic coma just seeing them eat all this. But there's, there's a method to that, right?
There, there's a little bit of a method and it's a, honestly, um, everybody is different. And, um, and I think you just kind of, like, I'm still learning, you know, I've done, I don't know, 12 or 13 marathons now. And I'm still, like this last Boston, I was like, I'm, you know, I'm going to take this as a practice run and I'm, I'm going to use it to just, you know, fine tune my fueling and what I eat and how fast I go when I, when I start out. And, um, and so you're, yeah, so you're always kind of tweaking things. Um, and everybody, you know, everybody's different, everybody's bodies are different. And the, the premise is that you want to have enough glycogen in your body so that, you know, you've got that constant fuel. Um, but when you train, you know, as your, as your muscles heat up and they start working, they start excreting lactic acid. And, um, when you train for the marathon, you're actually like, you're training your body to flush lactic acid. And, um, what you want to do is there's a threshold and you, you kind of want to stay right at that threshold where your muscles are building up lactic acid, but your body is efficiently flushing the lactic acid. You're taking in more glycogen to keep refueling and, you know, the, you just kind of keep that cycle going smoothly. Um, if you go out too fast, and so this is, this is what I did in Tokyo. I actually PR'd in Tokyo, um, but I went.
Personal record?
Yeah.
Thank you, okay, continue.
So, um, so I went out too fast though, because the conditions were perfect. It was 40 degrees and sunny. It was a flat course and, um, and I had trained really well. I was, I was not injured, I wasn't sick. I was like, I thought this is my day. And, um, I was shooting for a 320, but I went out and I was with the 310 pace group through mile like 16 or 17. And, um, so I went out way too hot. And when you do that, if you haven't trained for it, so your muscles are excreting this lactic acid, but your body is not trained to flush it as quickly. And that's when you hit the proverbial wall. If you've heard about the wall?
Wow.
Or like you're literally.
Every podcast.
It's a big beautiful wall that we're going to build, no, not that one.
Gordon Summer wall.
Not that wall. Not that wall.
The wall between Lake Forest and Highland Park.
Yeah, yeah. So you, so you hit this, you hit this wall because there's so much lactic acid built up in your body and your body just starts to shut down. And, um, so in Tokyo, I went out too fast. Thankfully I had enough of a buffer because I hit that wall at mile 20. And it was, it was a death crawl to the finish. And I did, I did not, I, I felt very sick. It was, um, it was, it, I, I'll say it was not a good day, but I did, I came, so I was shooting for 320, I came in at 318. Um, so I hit my goal, I hit my goal, but, but like looking back, I was like this, it wasn't, it wasn't really a success because I didn't execute properly, you know, like the marathon's a long race and, and you have to be patient and you have to, you know, you have to respect the distance and, um, and, you know, you can't, I, I went out with a little too much bravado, like I'm going to crush it and, um, and it taught me, it taught me a lesson. It smacked me in the face right at mile 20.
So the night before the Chicago marathon, you, you'd have a nice dinner at Francesca's here in Lake Forest?
Of course.
On the pasta, yeah.
Yep, that's exactly where I was Joe.
There you go, see? Supporting local businesses Pete.
Yes.
Lori, you're talking about physical, okay? Okay, an old fat guy is talking to you about, uh, marathoning here. You haven't brought up the, uh, above the neck because yeah, lactic acid, you feel the burn and all that, but your body, your body can technically go a lot farther, farther than what your mind can do. I don't want to get into brainwaves at all, but I will, I'm going to talk about mu waves. Joe, you can look that up sometime, M-U. You get in the zone, like Michael Jordan gets in the zone, great elite athletes can get in the zone and you're in that focus to carry you where you think you, you can't go. What, what do you do mentally to prepare for this, uh, for these feats of strength?
Yeah, yeah, a couple of different things. Yeah, yeah, a couple of different things. I typically, so from my house to Lake Bluff and back is exactly six miles on the bike path. And um, so I typically, like, once I get to mile 20 and I've got six miles left, I just kind of put myself mentally on the bike path and I just kind of get into this like, you know, just, it's one foot in front of the other and this is, this is a piece of cake. It's, it's Lake Bluff and back and I'm home. Um, but yeah, there's definitely, you know, it, you get to a point where everything starts to hurt and and the wheels are gonna come off. It's just a given. It, I don't care who you are, like, at some point, the wheels are gonna come off. You just need to be um, like, you can't let any, any little creeping thought come into your brain because the second it does, it spreads. And you, and then, and then you start, you know, you, you let that, you know, my feet hurt or it's too hot or or it's too cold or I'm chafing under my armpit, like, whatever it is.
Or I gotta go to the bathroom. We haven't gone there yet.
Yeah, I've always wondered about that. What? How, you can't go to the bathroom during the marathon.
Actually, you can. This one guy just did.
Yeah, you can. They have, so they do have porta potties along the course. Um, whether you choose to go to the bathroom is up to you.
You could do what that, that astronaut woman did, which she was driving out to that crazy story a few years ago.
Yeah.
Were the adult diapers?
Yeah. So, so here's a funny story. Well, I don't know if it's funny. I don't know if it, I, I choose to go to the bathroom. I actually, I ran Chicago last year. I had a bad day. My, I was injured and I stopped three times to go to the bathroom. Um, in Tokyo, they're very, very respectful over there. Very polite, very, like, if you spit on the ground, they could throw you in jail. It is law and order and um, there is no defecating in public. There's no, like, in, like.
Right.
And.
Los Angeles there.
Yeah, yeah. And they're, they're the only marathon. So all of the, all of the races say there's a time limit. It's usually like six hours. If you don't cross the finish line in six hours, like, you know, and they do, I mean, you have to have a cutoff, like, you know, you can't have volunteers. You can't have volunteers out there for, you know, 10 hours, you know, waiting for people to give water to. So um, but Tokyo is the only one where they actually have a bus and the bus drives along. And if you don't hit the checkpoints in the certain amount of time, they pull you off the course and they put you on the bus.
These are the same guys that push people onto the subway train, if you've ever seen that. Like, they, they, they get crowded, the sub trains in Tokyo and they have workers with like sticks pushing people on, to get on the train to keep.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yes.
I didn't see that.
I mean, I think this is pre-COVID, but um, yeah, that, that's.
Go to India sometime.
I'm sure there's videos of that online.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Well, apparently, so I'm, I'm part of a, you know, on, on Facebook, I've, there's, there's groups like Tokyo Marathon 2024 Group. So I heard a story of um, one unfortunate person who had an accident on the course and the, the, the officials pulled him off um, because he had.
Yeah.
Did not use the, the appropriate facilities, so they yanked him. But they'll even, you know, you have your gus and you open up your goo packets and if, if you toss your wrapper on the ground, they'll yank you off the course.
Wow.
Yeah.
I like Japan. I like Japan.
Yeah. I experienced, I experienced an earthquake out there. It was so cool.
Really? What'd it feel like?
Um, honestly, I didn't know it was an earthquake at the time. I thought that I just had noisy neighbors in the, in the hotel room next to me. I was like, what are they doing over there?
My God, there was no uh, tsunami afterwards.
Well, it's those paper walls.
Yeah.
So Lori, there was an anniversary, uh, I don't know, I'm gonna look it up, but there was a lady that snuck in, was it to Boston? They said, you know, women weren't, uh, do you know the story? Can you enlighten us on that?
Yeah, Catherine Switzer. So she was actually the second woman. There was a, um, she, so Catherine Switzer actually registered for the Boston Marathon, but she didn't put down her first name. She just put the letter K and then her last name. So they didn't catch that it was a female. And um, and so she, so, so the idea back then was that women's bodies were not capable of running a marathon. And um, and so she, she registered, she got her bib and um, and she, she was running and um, and I guess the, the course marshal had figured out that there was a woman on the course and there's a famous picture. You could probably Google it, Pete, and pop it up, but there's a famous picture of her running and the, the course marshal guy is trying to yank her bib off of her and yank her off the course. And she was running with her boyfriend and her, and like her boyfriend's friend or something. And the, so the two guys were pushing the, the course um, marshal away. So, so she is officially the first woman to have run the Boston Marathon. And she's still, she's out there. She's um, you know, these, the uh, for Patriots' Day. They, the whole weekend is just, you know, they have um, events, you know, on the Saturday and the Sunday leading up to the race. And they have, some of the elites are there doing shakeout runs and um, and giving talks and signing autographs. And Catherine's, she's always there every year. She's there. So.
I want to get into crummy stuff, but it is wasn't in use pretty much for that Boston Marathon, the damn pressure cooker. How have they changed things in security and all that? Did you notice anything?
Yeah. Um, I know, it's super sad. So there's, um, they actually, and you can see they have, um, they've got some big memorials right along Boylston Street, um, you know, memorializing where the, the bombs had gone off and where the people had died. Um, I think like security for all of the majors is pretty, pretty tight. Um, and they, yeah, I mean, it's, they've just got it completely, completely roped off. There's no trash, you know, no trash cans anywhere. Um, they, you know, if, if you want to get to the finish area, you have to be registered. Um, all of the, you know, the runners are all registered. Um, you know, nobody else can go pick up your bib for you. You have to go pick it up.
Everywhere.
Yep.
Okay.
Were you in the marathon the year of the bombing?
I was not.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But I, I, you know, but you think about it every year that you're out there, you think about it. And um, there's actually a church right at the finish line. It's called the Church of the Finish Line. It's the Old South Church in Boston. I, I, I'm pretty sure it's the oldest church in America. Um, but they do a service because um, you know, the Boston Marathon is on Patriots' Day, which is Monday. So the church service on the Sunday before the race, um, so it's, you know, beautiful, beautiful service and um, and they, you know, they've al, they always talk about the bombing and um, and the resiliency of people. And um, this year, the sermon talked about, you know, um, how you combat evil with good and, you know, how the, how, you know, the running community and and the world really has shown up and um, and the evil that occurred that day has, you know, been the amount of good that has, you know, has.
Right.
Come that. Um, so it's very uplifting.
Last one, unless Joe has something, Lori. And you can say no comment on this, but where I'm going with it is you had the NCAA swimmers and guys or girls, girls that do they have something in the bylaws uh, that you can't do that?
No, there's, they have, um, they have a, I can't even remember because it's, I, I'm not good at this.
That's why I have you on.
No, you're either a girl or a boy. They have a, what is the word for it, Pete?
Transparent? Oh, no. Transgender, trans?
Um, no.
It's all in post. What's the?
No, there's an official um, uh, like a, there is like a, okay, so there is a um, non-binary, that's the word.
Non-binary, so there's a non-binary group?
Yes. So they do, you can enter as a non-binary.
Okay.
Uh, and they did have, they, there, um, there was a, so you know, I ran London in 2023 and there was a little bit of controversy over one of the non-binaries and um, whether they had run a, a BQ time. And and I'll say, um, I beat their time. So we're okay. We're okay.
What's your best marathon time?
318, which is about a 7:30. It's about 7:30 pace. So, but it, but here's, but here's where the sickness comes in because it was 31808 and that, that last eight seconds is just like eating me alive because it could be a 317.
Could be 319.
It could be.
You're not competitive at all, are you, Lori?
Just with myself.
Yeah, is that why you're?
So when is your net, when is your next, what's your next marathon?
Um, I'm, right now I'm signed up for Berlin. I've, I've done Berlin before. It's um, it's a, it's a good course, um, but it's the 50th anniversary this September. Um, so it's a marquee, you know, one of the marquee ones.
You run along the Berlin Wall?
No, you, no, you don't, but that, that is really cool. Have you seen the Berlin Wall?
Yes, I have.
It's super thin.
What's left of it.
What's left of it.
Left.
It's a spray paint holding it up.
Yeah, yeah. No, you finish, um, you finish.
Tourist attraction.
It, yes, yeah. Um, you finish at the Brandenburg Gate, but the other, so I'm, 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 I'm doing that one again because it's the 50th, but um, have you heard of the Adlon Hotel?
No.
Where, so you, you remember when Michael Jackson hung his nine-month-old baby over the?
Yeah.
Okay, that's at the, so I'm staying at the Adlon.
Oh, don't hang it. Your kids are too big.
You're not bringing, you're not bringing your kids, are you?
No, maybe I'll bring a Cabbage Patch doll, though.
I wonder how many people have done that I, for a picture or something.
Only thing I have to say for you, Lori, is ekiner Berliner, I am a jelly doughnut, according to JFK. Fitzgerald Kennedy, not Lori Fitzgerald. Lori Fitzgerald, longstanding member in good standing, in great standing of Lake Forest, Illinois. Thanks for coming on the Lake Forest Podcast.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for, thanks for, good luck in the future marathons. We will be cheering you on. Let us know when you're, every time you run it, we'll uh, Pete will put something up for it.
Yeah, for a year, a year uh, after the fact.
Pete will come to the Chicago Marathon and and hang out like in Chinatown when it runs.
Yeah, you should. Oh, Pete, you should.
Bullcrap. I, my wife ran it. I forgot when it was and it's a shit show trying to get down there and, you know, was that my wife?
Called public transit.
Yeah, you need to hold, so here's what you need to do if you're a spectator. Here's what you need. It's impossible for the spectators to find the runners. It's easier for the runner to find the spectator. So you go down and you take an umbrella, even if it's like a sunny day, take a bright red umbrella. And you just say, hey, I'm gonna be at the corner of like Sirmac and, you know, whatever on the right-hand side, runner's right or runner's left with the bright red umbrella. And then as your, as your runner is making their way, they'll say, okay, I'm on Sirmac. I should see him on my right-hand side holding a bright red umbrella. So that's what I, that's, because my, my, I've seen my, my dad and um, and my stepmom come in and they um, they've come down to Chicago and they like to stay in the loop area where it's super, super crowded. So I just, I say, bring the umbrella and tell me if you're on my right or my left. And then, and it's, and you literally run right up to them. So that's, there's your tip, there's your tip of the day.
The other tip is I've heard from, from the wife that you put on your bib, it's my first time and my name is Maureen, so that the crowd will shout to you to keep you going. I don't know if you've ever done anything like that, but uh.
Yeah.
I should go out there.
You should.
Do I have to qualify? Can I just show up and pay?
No.
No, okay, never mind. Hi, I'm Pete, Lake Forest Podcast. It's my first time.
Lake Forest, he plugs the podcast with the.
You think Lake Forest should have a marathon?
So we've actually, in our running group, we've actually discussed this. We think Lake Forest should have a half marathon. You know Highland Park does. The Highland Park, yep, yep, the Highland Park. It used to be, it used to be called the North Shore Classic and then after the, the parade shooting, um, they changed the name to the Highland Park Strong. So yes, there, it's the first weekend in June every year. Uh, yeah, no, Lake Forest should definitely, we should definitely.
Let's do that. Let's get together and do that. You heard it here first, ladies and gentlemen.
Sales at Francesco's will go up with everybody loading up on pasta.
Yes.
Why Francesca's? There's nothing good to.
Local business, Pete. All right. Yeah, there's nothing I can eat either, if it's just pasta. I just, I eat the steak or the fish when I go.
So much for getting a good meal there for us. Lori Fitzgerald, thank you for hanging on.
Thanks, Lori. Good luck.
Thank you.
You don't need luck.
Happy Patriots' Day.
That's right, damn straight. All right, see you, Lori.
See ya.
Michelle Parno has lived and worked in Lake Forest for over two decades. Michelle's lending experience, when combined with her real estate expertise, makes her an invaluable asset to her clients as they navigate their home buying or selling process. Call Michelle now at 847-528-8721, 847-528-8721. For the best cannabis in the world, look no further than Iliad Epic Row. Owned by Lake Bluff's own Rich Ruzic, they are a cannabis cultivation center focusing on hard-to-find small-batch products that will delight both the occasional user and gangier. When visiting Michigan, ask for it by name. Epic products, exceptional process. For more information, email info at iliadgrow.com. Laricey and Company CPAs founded in 2010 by Lake Forest's own Brian Laricey specializes in tax preparation and bookkeeping services. earning the People Love Us on Yelp Award. Their process is straightforward. Just upload, review and file. For a free quote, visit lariceycpa.com now. That's L-A-R-I-S-E-Y-C-P-A dot com. I'm excited to share with you something special from our Lake Forest community. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa located at 775 North Bank Lane in Lake Forest near Wisconsin Avenue. This just isn't any spa. They offer an amazing blend of traditional spa services plus the added benefit of medical procedures and treatments. In a relaxing and luxurious spa environment, you can enjoy a range of cosmetic and aesthetic treatments. These are all performed under the supervision of top medical professionals. The Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa provides skincare, facial rejuvenation, body contouring, laser hair removal, botox, dermal fillers, chemical peers and much more. What's great is that each treatment is tailored not just to enhance your appearance, but also to address specific skin concerns and to promote overall well-being. So if you're looking to pamper yourself and take your beauty routine to the next level, give the Aesthetic Lounge Med Spa a call at 224-768-8028. Or visit them at their location on North Bank Lane. It's an experience your skin will thank you for.